All right, we're back in session. Time now is ten twenty-nine. Item number sixteen, authorization for county judge to sign resolution number thirty-eight, thirty-eight dash fifteen, supporting application for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen indigent defense formula grant program.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, Shirley Stevens, tax assessor-collector, discussion regarding satellite substation locations in Lumberton, Sillsby, and Sour Lake. I think everybody has a letter here from Ms. Stevens, and Ms. Stevens is also here to address the court. Good morning, Ms. Stevens.
Just, this is basically an update on our substations. We have gone out and looked at two of the possible sites, and they were excellent. I need to visit with the Judge Minton to see if that one will work. The Texas DMV has approved at no charge to the county, uh, systems to go in these substations. Now, if we do plan to collect property taxes, the county will have to furnish that equipment for us.
And is that just a computer, or what would that be?
Just the basic hardware.
Okay.
Yeah, a computer. Now, uh, the Texas DMV, they will come in and do their own wiring for their system. I have spoken with Casey, and he's going to go out and look at these places and see what he can do. And, um, and then later, um, I'm thinking probably more closer to budget time, we will need to talk about personnel to, uh, put in these substations. But I just wanted to touch base with you and let you know that we are still working on it, and, uh, it's looking more favorable. And, uh, you know, after we once get it installed, implemented, and the word gets out, then, uh, you know, we could possibly cut back on employment at that point. But to begin with, I will need staff for each one of those offices. But I just need to give you an update.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
All right, we'll move on to item number eighteen, Linda Davis, indigent healthcare department, authorization for county judge to sign fiscal year two thousand and sixteen interlocal cooperative act contract between Hardin County and University of Texas Medical Branch at Galveston. Good morning, Linda. I think there's just been a few changes to the agreement, and Linda wanted to go over those with us before we take action.
Yeah, actually, and this renewal that they did this year with UTMB, and the only time that our indigent healthcare clients in Hardin County, indigent healthcare eligible clients in Hardin County go to UTMB is only if there's not a local specialist that can take care of them. So we have very few that go. But actually, the rates went down. Uh, we had, all of them went down from forty percent to thirty-three percent of the charged amount. In other words, whatever they charge, you only pay thirty-three percent. Previously, in two thousand and fifteen, we were paying forty percent. Uh, one of them figures went down from inpatient services in UTMB hospital from a forty-eight percent to forty-one percent, which is good. One went up, and it's for implants. Originally, it was thirty-three percent for implants. They, uh, no, it was thirty-two percent, and it went up to thirty-three percent. The thing about with implants is we've never, since I've been here for twenty-seven years, have we had to pay for implants. But in that event, we would be paying thirty-two percent of the charged amount. Uh, the rest of it is, uh, pretty much the same as before. So Rebecca Walton, our county attorney, read over this, reviewed over it, and, um, felt very comfortable with it, talked with me about it, and so we're, we're, we're very pleased with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Since the news was good, Linda wanted to present that about the rates going down.
In case anyone had any questions, so, and like I said-
If it was bad, she would've told us that too.
Yeah.
I move, we authorize county judge to sign the agreement.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Linda. Number nineteen, appoint a committee to review applications for the on-site sewer project. I recommend that, uh, we appoint Commissioner Chris Kirkendall as the chair of that committee, and to serve with Chris would be Esther Scarborough, and she has agreed, and I've asked her, and also Jared Fountain. He didn't want to, but he said he would. That's why he's here today, he didn't want us to do it without him being here.
I've been here fifteen years, Judge, and it's not totally, having, never told a judge no.
No, he, he wasn't reluctant at all. He said he would be glad to serve, and we appreciate that. So, uh, that'd be Commissioner Kirkendall, Esther Scarborough, and Jared Fountain on that committee if the court approves.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. I, uh, did speak with Commissioner Kirkendall this morning, and he said he'd be glad to serve on that as well. So we didn't just appoint him because he's not here. All right, let's, uh... Item number twenty, Misty Whitney, purchasing agent, discussion and possible action regarding results from sale of two thousand and five F-250 crew cab, VIN number ending in seven eight nine three, with Renee Bates online auction. Good morning, Misty.
Renee Bates auction of the two thousand and five Ford F-250 crew cab closed on November sixth, two thousand and fifteen at two P.M., and the final bid was three thousand one hundred dollars.
Who's precinct is this?
That's mine.
Okay. You agree?
Uh, we were offered twenty-five hundred on trade-in.
Maybe we sell it at, per the bid.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now, if we could go back to item number ten, and by the way, thank you, Misty. Item number ten is Esther Scarborough, floodplain administrator, discussion and possible action to accept revised drainage plan for Oak Ridge Park subdivision. Good morning again, Ms. Scarborough.
Again. Um, I have a letter that each of you have, marked ten. It's a recommendation of approval of revised drainage plan for, uh, for the Oak Ridge Park subdivision, and it's from Fitzsimmons Shipman, Don King. And also, we have Mr. Earl Frost here, the developer of that subdivision this morning. Would you like me to read the recent modifications to the drain plan, or has everyone read those?
I've read it. Has everyone read that? Do, do we have any questions for Esther, or does anybody want to go over that?
It's pretty, uh, pretty involved. I, I only have one question, Esther, and I, I know we've, we've been batting this thing around, seem to be like for years now, but... When the court approved this originally, we had a drainage plan. And I guess my question, and I can't remember, I know there's been lots of discussion. There was something about a crossover cupboard that was concreted up or something like this.
Yes, sir.
The court approved the original plan. Did the court approve this, an amended plan? Do you see meant that cupboard up, or...?
Well, what, where that cupboard was, was on the south end, past the substation, between Keith Road and the substation. Um, the, on the, that was not on the final plans that the court approved. But that, the drainage issue that we have is not on that end of the street. It's on the northern part, north of the substation. Is where, um, some people have thought that maybe there need to be a cross cupboard, and I think it was a lot of the misunderstanding that that cross cupboard was taken out. But that cross cupboard would not have an effect on that, uh, on that north end of that.
Okay, so there was a later plat that this court did approve that eliminated-
Yes, sir.
That crossover cupboard.
As best my recollection, it was on the final plat where it was removed. It was on the preliminary when it was brought in.
But it was not on the final?
No, sir.
Okay. That's my question.
Commissioner Roberts, this is in your precinct.
Yeah, I, I do have, I do have some questions, and, and, uh... My, Mr., I see Mr. Frost is here, maybe he can answer some of them. This doesn't exclude, uh, digging the ditches to grade and fixing all that's, the problems that are there now. This is just gonna try to alleviate the problem in the middle.
Well, what other problems are there?
Well, I, I know that none of the culverts are set on grade, they're all like this, all open down the road. I watched, uh, the other day, I watched the rain and watched the water, couldn't get through some of them, uh, backed up at ones, and others didn't har- have hardly any water flowing through them. Plus, most of the, most of the culverts that are there are full of dirt or mud. You got twenty-four inch culverts that, that are only allowing, you know, half the water to go through them, if that much.
Have you looked at the revised plan?
Um, this is all I've got right here.
The revised plans are here, the drainage plan.
Can we get those?
It says on, on point two, to regrade the west road ditch of Topa from lot nineteen twenty-one to the north ditch at a slope of thirty-seven percent. So he's talking about regrading there, um, and changing out culverts and the existing ones. But it doesn't say anything about cleaning out, but I'm assuming that that will be part-
We cleaned them out, you know, six months ago, we'll clean them out again, it don't matter.
Then we'll be cleaning them out when you get through.
I'm sorry, sir?
Then we'll be cleaning them out when you get through.
That's right.
Yeah.
But, but my problem, and going back, going back on, I, I know that, but going back on what I'm asking is, are, and I, I know that we had a meeting, uh, and, are, are the culverts that are set that are already there under concrete driveways, are those gonna be set to grade now that we're gonna-
What you and I agreed to, that is correct, sir.
Okay.
Nothing has changed.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure on that.
I, I, I guess I have another question though. We had a final drainage plan.
Yes, sir.
And of course, our engineer is not here, but was that drainage plan carried out?
It was carried out, um, but the, we, there was more water that, that Natures, had, Natures Engineering had originally, uh, informed Don King of, that came across from Crestwood, um, between lots eighteen and nineteen. And so now we have a new revised drainage plan that Mr. King is, uh, approving to, for recommendation to be approved.
Okay, but I guess, um, so the final drainage plan that this court approved, it has significantly been carried out?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and now-
The original final drainage plan was completed.
Okay, and subsequently-
May, may I, sir?
Yeah.
There was one home in there that was put in below grade. A lot of concern become available to that one home. And now we're building a subdivision to fit that home.
But back to my original, we did, or the developer, and Don King supervising. We did, or they did, carry out the final drainage plan as approved by this court.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, but based upon some subsequent things, like he's mentioned, uh, a home or whatever, subsequently, it has come to the attention that the drainage plan may have had errors or whatever it had, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
But there has been some additional work, and now we're, um, there's been a, I guess, an agreement, or proposed agreement to come in and do a revised draining plan to try to correct these things.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. And Alvin, it being your precinct, um, you've read these, and I assume you feel that these are in the best interest of the subdivision and...
Well, and, and, yeah, as far as I can see, but my, my other question, and I, and of course, there, yeah, I was hoping engineers would be here today, so that maybe they could shed more light on it. I, I don't want, and I've seen it happen before, because I'm having to correct it. I know Commissioner Cooper's having to correct it in sub, other subdivisions, where, uh, you basically move water from one area to another area. I, I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna move water from that middle area that goes underwater and comes across the road and goes across into that, uh, house across on the other side even. We're not gonna move that water down to the north end and flood those lots on the north end, or flood the lots across when, when it backs up in the ditch, because it can't get to Boggy Creek on the other side.
We're already moving that water to the north end right now.
Right.
We're just simply stopping it before it gets to the houses and moving it down there in another direction. Nothing else has changed.
Okay. The, my, and then that goes back to my other question. When you move that amount of water into that one location, again, you're gonna, you're gonna have water back up. But when it, even when it gets under the road and goes down to the backside on the east side of your addition, is it gonna be able to go on to Boggy Creek, or is it, I know the ditch is tiring and stuff. How much of that is gonna block it back up, or do we need a, it, does it need an outfall ditch to go on toward Boggy Creek? Uh, we don't want, we, we don't, we definitely don't wanna flood houses that are, there are lots on the, on the, on the east side by bringing the water from the west side to certain points, or even the water on the northwest coming, coming down those corners. Because, uh, anybody that's gonna build in there, if they're, if they don't build up, like you said, they should build up at least as high as the road, from what I've seen, because the right, when it gets to the road, it, it, he can't get across. Uh, I've looked at it several times during rains, light rains, heavy rains, it doesn't matter. Uh, you got water big, backed up and built up on the, on the west side of the road, and on the east side of the road, there's hardly any water at all in the ditches or anything. Uh, and that's my concern. When you push that water to a one location, is all that water gonna stay, or is it gonna get out of there?
Well, it's been pushed to that one location now for how long? Over two years?
I don't know.
Well, I'm telling you, it's over two years, and we've watched it. And, and the real truth is, and, and I think that, that any of you commissioners that, that watch the drainage in this county, if it's, if that water is released and out of there within twenty-four hours, it's considered drainage. Am I right or wrong?
I, I guess my concern in this situation is, and we have a subdivision committee that's trying to address a lot of these things, and I think that the, the commissioners' court has learned a lot about subdivisions and drainage in this area, which is difficult. And Hardin County does not have a drainage district, so that compounds the situation even further. But as I go back and look at it, and we do have lots of subdivisions, I've got several of them in my precinct that if I could revise the plan at this point, it would be totally different than what a court accepted forty years ago, based upon experience. But I do think that once this court accepts a final plan, and we take our engineers and, you know, and we're looking at maybe a, a little bit closely, more closely, at the engineering of these things, and the engineer that we have to look at them, because they're our advisor in the county's protection, that probably once this county, this commissioners' court accepts a final plat, and it, on the advice of our engineer, then probably from that point on, we probably have limited ability, based upon experience, later on rains and stuff, because we don't always get the rain at the time that the construction's going on. But we have limited legal ability to come back and say, hey, you've gotta make drastic changes. Now, I think that if Alvin and the engineer and Mr. Frost and Esther, if they have worked out something here that appears that it will further solve the problem out there, then I really believe we as a court should accept. Because somewheres along the line, there has to be an end to this. And, uh, I think we learn from this. I know that future subdivision, we're gonna be taking a very, very hard look. We've already taken some steps like retention ponds and things like this. But I don't think we can go back and start applying some of this to one that the commissioners' court some years ago accepted on final plat. I mean, that, that's just my position.
I would defer to Commissioner Roberts. Are you ready to make a decision today, or do you need more information from the engineers? Do you have questions you need to ask the engineers before you can make a decision?
Well, the only, my only, my only, uh, thing is on this, if, if, okay, yeah, the engineers are saying this will work, but they also said that the other things would work. In six months, eight months, however long it takes to get this out of this, these specs, and we get another rain and it doesn't work, then what, where do we go, what do we do?
Well, we'll have a period of one year, just like we did last time.
It does work.
Okay.
It has been working.
Uh, sorry, I, I-
What we're trying to do now is, is defer that water from getting to the street and, and do nothing more than stop it before it gets there. It has worked.
Uh, I, I have to disagree with that, and I think the residents who live on Topa Trail will disagree with that also, that it hasn't worked. Uh, Topa Trail is a dam. When, when the water gets to it, it builds up on that side till it gets to the point where it runs over the road. And then when it runs over the road, the lot directly across from where you're talking about the house that was not built on grade is now becoming a big pond, uh, because the water's going straight on through his yard. It's not even falling in the ditch and following the ditch lines on the other side. So I don't think the drainage has worked. It's, it's doing what it did for, forever before the road was built, when it built up, and of course, the road's built up higher than it was. But in the old days, when there was no road there, the water just filtered across and made its own path to Boggy Creek. Now that you have residences there that have built up the lots and built the lots up higher than where they were, it displaces more of the water and puts it in more, in more centralized locations. In this, in this instance, it's putting it more and more right there in the center where the, where the substation is and where that house is. Uh, it built, like I said, it builds up to the point where it runs over the road. That's not, that's not, that-
That's what the new plan is going to start.
Right, and that's, and I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. Hopefully, that new plan will alleviate that situation. But my whole deal is, if it doesn't, then I, you know, what are we gonna do next? You know, the, I looked at, you know, before I took this office, another commissioner sat here, and he had same, same types of discussions. I went back and watched some of the videos and read his notes, he left me his notes. I know about the culverts that were put in to, to pull some of that water down. It, you're saying it is doing it, but it's not. Uh, hopefully, it will in the long run? I hope so. I, for the people who live on that road, I hope so. I, I, I want things to work right for them. But my whole, my whole deal is, if it doesn't, are we gonna be back to the, you know, you said it's working, but apparently it's not because we're reengineering it. If, if it doesn't work this time, we're, are we gonna do it again? Is this gonna be a continuing effort till we figure out what makes it do water, or is this gonna work? I, like I said, I hope this works, and it doesn't necessarily mean it is. I'm, I'm more concerned with now we're gonna move that large amount of water that's piling up in the middle and eventually goes across the road and floods on the other side of the road, as well as, on both sides of the road, ends up flooding in that guy's yard. I'm, I'm just as concerned, is moving that water north, is it gonna flood those lots up north? On the north side of Topa, uh, you know, the north end of Topa, is it gonna flood? Is it gonna flood the, the, the ditches out on that end where they can't get the water?
It's going to, would it already?
No, the water can't, the, the, no, the water is not going there. And that's where you and I are in disagreement. The water is cutting across the road in the center of the road. It eventually gets to the point where it runs over the road. Esther's seen it, I've seen it, I've got pictures of it. And, and, and doesn't have to be a great big rain. I know we talk about all these floods and all this stuff, but believe me, I've lived in that area long enough. When I know, when my neighborhood floods, it's been a big flood. When my neighborhood doesn't flood and the ditches are draining fine in my neighborhood, and I go over there and that's all underwater, that concerns me, because I have seen my street with water across it, and I know that's a flood. So I'm, I'm just concerned for the, the, the people who live on Topa Trail. I want it to work for them, I want it to work right for them, but there's just, there's a lot of things that needs to be done in there. And, and hopefully, this is one of the things that will alleviate that problem. But in the same token, I don't wanna take the water that's coming, that's naturally always came through that center part of that, that addition, going, and that's going across the road. And we're gonna move it north now. Is that gonna, is that gonna back the water up on Creekwood? Because anytime you turn, turn the water, anytime you take water that's been going straight and turn it, it backs it up? Is that gonna back water up on Creekwood? Is that gonna put more water at the end of Creekwood where, where the ditches are already full when the rain? And, you know, they're doing what they're supposed to do. What's it gonna do? Now, if it works, it works, and I'm good with that. But if it doesn't work, are we gonna be back on the same page?
Well, we still have a one-year warranty period.
Yeah, and so-
That's what I, that's what I wanted to address. This, that's, that's how this came about. We were under a one-year warranty period. We saw the drainage wasn't working, I understand.
We shouldn't even really call it a one-year. We have a warranty period that until it's right, it's, uh, it stays in a warranty.
Sometimes that one-year warranty peri- period ain't long enough. I'd say make them fix it now, Al.
Well, if it, if it, if it, you know, we, we only way we can tell is if we get rain. If we get, and suppose it's gonna be a wet winter, so we'll know. But it, it should be fixed, you know, there's no doubt it should be fixed.
I've had extensive concert, conversations with Don King, and he believes that cha- changing those twenty-four in, that one twenty-four inch cupboard to two thirties should not, should take that water away from the road and take it on out of there. And then also putting that ditch in behind those lots would bring some, the water that's normally on Crestwood would take it north also.
Was that his recommendation, or was that the recommendation from Natures and Don agrees with it?
It was Natures and Don, Don requested many times, going back and forth, more calculations on water flow, cubic feet per second coming through there.
And don't remember, did he recommend putting those two thirty-inch culvert in?
They, they agreed on it together, what, what we do, the two thirties, the, what, what happens a lot of times is, and he's right that there is sand in the culverts, but you only have one twenty-four inch there, so when the water can't get through it, breaches the cupboard, which pushes it over the road and also over the culverts there. So he feels very confident these two thirties will move that water out of there. And the, uh, north culverts have, I've never seen them at maximum. I've never seen the water go over the road with those north culverts.
No, it's right there by the lift station.
No, it's further north, they're more toward Park Road, uh, the two north, northern culverts are.
Let me ask you this question. If this court does not approve this revised drainage plan, what is our option?
We sit like we are. Without going, he, without your approval, he cannot go in and do the work which he agreed to do at our meeting that we had with the two engineers.
It's, it's not necessarily so much that I don't agree with, with trying to fix it.
Right.
My, my deal is, is, and like Commissioner Cooper's saying, that your one-year period comes along really fast. Can, can we extend that one-year period if it's not working right to get it done right?
We've extended it many times. He has areas, I had one place in Mr. Cooper's area that was on a one-year warranty period for two and a half years. That's why it really shouldn't be called a one-year warranty period.
Okay, well, I'm in agreement with that. I, I think if we can extend it, if, if by the time the one-year peri, you know, warranty period is up, and we haven't reached a, a solution that we can continue on, I just hate it, like I said, it, it goes back to the people that live there. I hate it for the, I hate it for the people who bought homes and, and, and built homes on that road, that when it rains, they, they live in an island. I, 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 and it's not, we're not getting flooded yet. If we get a true flood, it's gonna be bad.
Well, I would pretty much think if they didn't get one last weekend, they're pretty good.
No, it, it didn't, it didn't rain, it didn't rain in Lumberton like it rained up north. I'm sorry, it didn't. We had, we had a lot less rain than they had up here. But still, all in all, I've seen just rains that have done that, and they're not one-hundred-year rains or fifty-year rains. I've seen the big rains, so you can't tell me that, but-
So if this is approved today, then once the work is completed, that's when we'll start the warranty, is that right?
Yes.
You're very important, asking the court.
But it's, it's already started, it will just remain in there.
And at that time, we'll evaluate whether or not we've had a flood, and if we haven't, that's when we'll vote to extend the warranty.
Or if we have a, uh, a major flood and we see how the water functions, then we can, uh, if it, everything works the way it's supposed to.
If there's an issue, we'll address it then.
Right, and I'm in agreement with that. I just, I just wanted that put in.
I've heard that before, too.
Uh, I, I, that's why I wanted to say what I had to say, that if, if, you know, it doesn't work, then we're gonna have to do something different. But we're, it, and-
So we approve this, and then if it don't work, we go back and, and go back to the drawing board, and we just keep on going for years?
Well, the problem with that, Mr. Frost, is if it doesn't work and we accept it in, then we have to fix it.
Who's determining whether it works or not?
I, it's-
It ain't gonna work, so I guess we are.
Yeah, if it does, if it doesn't work, it'll be, you'll be able to see it. You'll be able to see if it's flooding somewhere else, or flooding the people across the street, or still flooding in the same place.
Well, it hasn't flooded anybody, yes, there's water.
No, they haven't gotten water in their house, but it, it, it's just, you know, they're, they're just, the other day, it was just luck.
And then, and eight hours later, the water's gone.
Okay, but, but once again, I'm not, I'm not gonna put the burden, burden of the county, or, or make it burden the county to go in there and fix it after a certain period of time if it doesn't work. If it doesn't work, then it's gonna have to be fixed before we can take it in as, as a county, because we can't afford to fix it. We don't have the money to go in there and fix that drainage. So it needed to be fixed before we took it in, and that's, that's where I stand on that.
Well, I guess the, the real question is, is, you know, how do we determine that it's fixed? If the water's not there, and eight hours later, what is, what's determined whether it's right or wrong? I mean, I, you, you, I'm, I'm, gotta have some sense made here.
Normally, the process is, is that during a major rain, uh, Don King or, uh, Don Burles would come out and watch the water flow, and if it's working, then they would write a letter of recommendation saying, yes, it's working, that you have drainage in a certain amount of time. And, uh, we haven't had any houses flood on that street. We, the one that built too low did get close, but, um, I don't know what the solution to that is. But, um, then we would, Mr. King would give us a letter saying that it was approved. We'd do a walkthrough, like we've done in your area many times, and he'd give us a walkthrough, and, and we would go in and bring the letter to court, and y'all would have to, you know, make that decision at that time, to approve it or not to approve it.
Have we approved the new, uh, regulations yet? Have we approved the new, uh, regulations yet, subdivision?
We're, we are doing it piece by piece, we're waiting on some information coming in. We have approved that, uh, the detention ponds be in each new subdivision. And, uh, then today you approved a section of it, but I, we're still waiting on some information to come back from Mark Wiley and Associates.
Well, and. And here's where we're getting into difficulty. Is. Every new subdivision built. Is impacting the subdivisions already there. Cause you're putting a few more bricks in the dam because we're in a water shed area. Um. Got a subdivision in Pinewood that was built in nineteen sixty-two. Now they're building mounds nine feet high out there. Every mound built is going water back further. We had what, fifteen, thirteen homes?
Thirteen homes.
Thirteen homes flooded in this situation the other day.
And many of those homes have flooded before.
Now that plat has on it. What I think every plat. Where Harden County issues a subdivision permit. That plat has down at the bottom on it. Harden County takes no responsibility for flooding. Because we, this is a flooding area. And as, every time we build a new subdivision, it's gonna get worse. Every time as the creeks fill up with debris. The main drainage system for the area that we're talking about here is Pine Island Bio. Pine Island Bio is controlled by the Big Thicket National Preserve. It cannot be cleaned out. And so if Harden County wants a guarantee or wants to be able to guarantee its citizens. That they're getting a maximum protection against flooding, then we need to stop all subdivisions. That is your only solution. But I do think. That we need to be careful that once this court approves a final plat. And then we come back based upon experience. And say, that's not working anymore. Because if they can get it out under the warranty period. Then we've got subdivision all over this place that. A year or two later, depending on when it rains sufficient to give flooding, could be a problem. Now, we have attempted to address that problem through these retention ponds. That are now gonna be required, that you have to prove that you can hold your water. Without flooding your homes. For a period until the flooding on the bio goes down. Which is gonna make it far more expensive to build a subdivision. But I think the county needs to be very clear on what it expects from these people before we ever give them a plat, uh, ever give them permit to start with.
This subdivision's definitely been a learning curve, I think we've all learned from that and the growth has been so rapid in that area. That, uh, we have to figure out some way to.
Well, that's the area of concern.
Right.
That's the area of concern, that's where the growth's taking place, that's where the dam is being built.
I don't think, unless I'm just remembering wrong, once we have approved and taken one into the county, I don't think we've ever changed any drainage. It's usually been before, I know we had some issues in, um, Westwood Village Three. That we had to correct some drainage before the one-year warranty period or the two and a half year warranty period was over. But that was, uh, that was taken care of, they enlarged their pond there to take on that water, so.
Generally, the warranty period has been concerned with the roads. The roads holding up. Now. I agree with Alvin that, you know, we've gotta protect the county from future. And I think the only way to do that is the people that buy these homes. Need to understand that we are in a area that is subject to heavy rains and poor drainage and Harden County does not have a drainage district. As such, there's no guarantee. That depending on where the rain is, what the conditions are, how much future building there is, how much clogging of these bios and stuff and drainage ditches. And all out in that area, if you take an aerial map or fly over it. The timber companies have broken the land up, they sold it, there's been tremendous clearcutting take place. The little lateral bran- branches that used to take the water to the bio, they're now plugged. Conditions have changed drastically here. And this is the attempt, I guess, in, in the subdivision regulations to address all these issues so that people who wanna build a subdivision know going in upfront. What they're facing. I believe we should. If Alvin's in agreement that we should accept this revised plan, we should see what it does. See if it helps, I don't know if there's a perfect plan down there. And I think as you get heavy rains, that we turn around and get a twenty-five inch rain, which we've had in the past and stuff.
I hope not.
Then. You're gonna have a lot of flooding down that area, so are you gonna come back again and say, well, hey, you know, we've gotta solve all that before we accept this?
Well, I don't know that it can be solved because that area takes water from the city of Lumberton and, you know, they're building subdivisions just as fast as they can build them and so we can. We, we can't stop them, we can only answer to the county, so.
But, and I, and I don't disagree with that, and, and, and let me go back, okay. When we're talking about flooding and stuff, I'm not disagreeing with. The flooding end of it, I'm disagreeing with just regular rains. That when it regularly, when it comes a regular rain through there, and I was talking about eight hours and all this stuff. But it, we had a drought for, uh, almost two months and water still stood in those ditches. The water is not draining out of that area, it's not getting past the, the, the road and going on out. It's staying in there, it, that all, that all needs to be fixed, I know we talked about that and he's gonna bring all that to Gray, well, that, that's all fine and well. I don't mind that, my problem is when we have a, a pretty good rain. Uh, it's, it's bringing that water to the center where it is now and it's not going, being able to go anywhere, so it's going across the road and it's flooding. The person's yard across the road and that's where it's making its way, it's got, water's gonna make its way no matter what. These are not necessarily big rains that are affecting anywhere else but that one area. We, we don't need that, we, the, the ditches need to be dug correctly. And you need to protect the road, first of all, all that water coming up against that road, like Ken said, is gonna start affecting that road. It'll start eroding under the road, uh, the more you get up under there, it could be, I don't care if the road is perfectly concreted. It's gonna start breaking it down, it's gonna break the shoulders down on the road, it's gonna break the road down, am I correct?
If you put two thirties in there, the ditch is gonna have to be wide then.
Yeah, it's not good and, and, I know putting two thirties here, putting two thirties there, fine, I'm good with all that. I'm, I'm fine with letting, letting it go its course, see what happens. But my whole point is, if it doesn't work. As a county, we can't take it in just to try to figure out and fix it, it's gonna have to be fixed somehow. I know Mr. Frost is, is tired of having to re-engineer or having to refix, the people that live there are the same way. Uh, I don't know what the fix is, I made a suggestion, nobody wants to hear my suggestion, I still say that there should be a cross culvert where all that water's going on the road. And should be an outfall ditch on the other side of the road. My, my predecessor said that, uh, and, and I don't disagree with that. Um, I don't, I don't agree with making it go the other, eh, eh, north or south, I agree with making it go east and west.
If you want us to put a, one across the road, I'll be happy to do that, we'll put one across the road if you'll take the responsibility for it.
Responsibility for what?
I'll, I'll find if you put it across the road.
Well, so you got another commissioner saying if you put one across the road, he'll vote for it.
That's my only reason for not.
But that, that also includes an outfall ditch on the other side, so you don't flood those people on the other side, they're, they're gonna, there's gonna have to be an outfall ditch there somewhere in the middle.
I don't know how you would do that, all the lots have already been sold.
Well, you're gonna have to, they're gonna have to make some sort of easement.
That's why I wouldn't put him to put in.
Well, you take it to the east side and you take it down the drainage as it designed there.
So, yeah, what, what was your comment, Commissioner Cooper? I, you know, I'm fine with, I'm fine with whatever they come up with, try to make it work for those people down there. If it works, it works, that's great, but if it doesn't work, we're back to square one again.
Well, we always have the warranty period, so we don't have to take it out of the warranty period unless it does work, so that's what we're trying to decide today, whether we're gonna try this new plan that the two engineers have come up with. And see how it works and if it doesn't work, then we're back to working, yet getting it, a new plan worked out because he's agreed to do it. It's in your hands to decide whether or not you wanna do it.
The question in the end is, who says if it works or not? If Mr. Roberts says is the sole source of saying it works or don't, you know, I'm not happy with that at all.
Well, according to subdivision regulations, it would be the county engineer who at this moment is Don King.
Well, the county engineer accepted it as it was in this, in this courtroom right here already, so that didn't work.
And I see that happening again, if we make these changes and, and, uh, we get a eight-inch rain in six hours and have the same problems that we've been having. I look for Mr. King to come back again and say it's still not working. And that's, that's what I'm gonna go off of.
And that's, that's what I'm, that's where I'm, why I'm saying this. Because it, you know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Your engineer and our engineer says this is gonna fix the problem. If I remember right, you.
They agreed to it in the beginning.
Right.
And, and in the end, in all honesty.
Right.
You know, Don King recommended to this court right there at that podium, recommendation of it. Because it was, it was finished and it was out of its, its warranty period and he recommended approval of it and.
Right.
You know, so if, if your engineers recommended it. I mean.
I think we all agree there were some mistakes made and we're hoping that this is gonna alleviate those, but there, there's some doubt. Uh, I, I'm gonna go by what Mr. King said and I'm okay with it, it sounds like Mr. Pelt is, there's some doubt with Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Roberts feels like, uh, he may be okay to go ahead, sounds like to me, I'm not sure, but, uh.
I'm fine to go, I'm, I, I'm fine to go ahead with this.
Put that in a motion, somebody.
I'll make a motion, we accept this.
I see.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts to. Accept the revised drainage plan for Oak Ridge Park subdivision and a second by Commissioner Pelt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
I'm moving it, Jerry.
Sir.
Do you understand it, Jerry?
See if I can get up. Is it right? Yeah.
I think we made a very careful subdivision. Any subdivision deals? Are you subdivision loud, Mr. Pelt?
I didn't get a number twenty.
It's going to.
Do you want one of these?